The Naloxone overdose response app, or Nora, is a life-saving tool that can help anyone respond to an opioid-related overdose. Developed by the Connecticut Department of Public Health and Info Line 211, this tool will help you to identify signs and symptoms of an opioid overdose, the steps to take to respond to that overdose, how to administer all four forms of naloxone, and how to report to the state if you have used naloxone to save someone's life. You can also find helpful resources on treatment for people who may be struggling, as well as support services for family and loved ones of that individual. You will also find information about the Good Samaritan Law and your protection under that law. To learn more, please visit www.norasaves.com or drugfreecct.org. And to learn how to use the app or have more questions answered, you can come see me. I'm Jennifer Dewitt, and I'm the Prevention Coordinator for the City of Waterbury.
Okay. Good evening.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we'll call to order the public hearing for Monday, May 24, 2021 at 6:55 PM for the purpose of providing information and receiving public comment related to the implementation of a rate schedule from the city's Water Bureau for water use charges for fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Anyone who was interested in addressing the board with respect to this particular item should have called in, and we'll begin calling back, calling folks back to get them on the public speaking. Please state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute limit, and I'll give you a one-minute heads-up if we can get the first caller. Are you there, caller? Are you there? Is there someone on the line? Oh, one second, okay. I'm sorry, I thought I heard somebody.
Hello?
Okay.
Hello?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, you can hear me, okay, tonight?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Sharon Samoska, 45 Pear Street in Waterbury, Connecticut. I live in the South End on Pear Street. I'm very... I'm sad that I wasn't able to speak last week. Something happened, and the situation failed, but at least I'm on tonight. So I am going to share what, some of what I was going to say last week.
Well, this, this is a... Wait, wait, this is a public hearing at this point just for the water rates. So if you want to call back to talk about other things, you'll have to call back at, for the next, for the regular meeting. This is a very specific public hearing just for the water rates.
He wasn't supposed to do that. I'll try calling him again. Bye.
Well, I think, can we just call her back when we get to the regular public speaking? Yes, so you don't have to call back if you're still listening. But we'll call you when we get to regular public speaking, so, okay. Okay, caller, are you there?
Yes, I'm calling up about the public hearing on the water and sewer rates.
Okay, go ahead.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road, if you can hear me or not.
Yes, we can, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Paul. We, as Waterbury taxpayers, do appreciate the fine work the Water and Street Department does, along with several paid contractors whom are all working together in unison, especially when it comes to replacing or repairing all outdated underground sewer and water pipes. I acknowledge that, but everyone else tells me this increase needs to be done ASAP. Granted, that may be true, but on the other hand, it's not a tax increase, so I'm told. You members of the Board of Aldermen have a responsibility to every taxpayer, homeowner, business, rent payers, to keep our local government affordable. Not anything goes. So if you guys can close the gap and do what you can, I know, I understand, a lot of things got to be done with infrastructure and everything else. I know there's a lot of money coming down from the federal government and grants and everything else, but the bottom line is, if you can do what you can to save us taxpayers' money, that would be well appreciated. And also, when I'm thinking about this, I know some people brought this up before in the past, and what I'm really concerned about is other towns and maybe some other small areas around, surrounding Waterbury, greater Waterbury area, if you will, are not paying their fair share of water rates. And I don't know if that's true or not, but I was hoping that all you people on the Board of Aldermen, and both Republican and Democrat, could work together with the administration to find out the best way you could move forward to make sure that everybody is paying their fair share, especially when it comes to the water and sewer. Because, again, what I'm saying is, businesses, I know, here in Waterbury, they're really hurting really bad, especially after COVID. And so I was hoping that, you know, members of the Board of Aldermen can all work in unison to make Waterbury a better place to live in. I know you guys do, and I know you try, and I give you a lot of credit. But the bottom line is, if we could just pay attention to what's going on with other small towns around Waterbury, surrounding Waterbury, where we could turn around and start saving some money for the taxpayers, especially when it comes to the water rates. And I thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
I hope you've all had a chance to, I hope you all had a chance to enjoy the weather. This is Bonnie Orentis, 246 Westmont. And I just thought it was the most glorious day, so you had to work. Unfortunately, I didn't, but I have three issues from the litter commission.
This is...
Number one...
Bonnie, before you go, I know it seems to be a little confusing. You're the second person to say. This is just the public hearing for the water rates, and then we'll go to the regular meeting. So if you want to speak about things other than the water rates, we'll call you back when we start the regular, public speaking and the regular meeting.
Oh, okay, because two different people called me, and I think they both gave me two different times to talk. So I'm happy with the water rates, because I'm happy with the water.
Okay.
But that's, but you'll call me back, right?
We'll call you back, and we'll get you back on for public speaking. You're the second person this happens to, so thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. That's it, okay. Those were the only calls then for the water rate. It was only the one caller, so we'll close the public hearing. And it being after 7 o'clock, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, May 24, 2021. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
Present.
Okay, Alderman Brinelli. Alderwoman Calo.
Present.
Alderwoman Calo. Alderman Calvin Calo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Present.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Mark.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nujain. Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver. Alderwoman Weaver. Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderwoman Korniruski.
Here.
Eleven present, four absent.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of people who got in touch with me. Alderman Lopez had indicated he was going to be traveling on medication, actually, out of the country, and he was going to try to join us, but he wasn't sure about the ability to get internet connection. And Alderman Weaver had let me know earlier today that she was coming down from Hartford. Her husband had surgery today, so we'll keep the Alderwoman and her husband in our prayers. But she's going to be joining us. She just might be a few minutes late at this point. So those are the two at this moment that I know about. With that, we'll go to public speaking. Okay, with that, we'll go to public speaking. And if we can get the first caller on the line, again, please state your name and address for the phone, your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. And if we could start by trying to get Ms. Samoska back on as the first caller, that would be great, thank you.
Hello?
Hi. Are you there? Yes, are you there? Can you hear me?
I am.
Okay.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you as well, so, and this is the...
Ah, thank you.
Speaking, so please, you can talk about whatever you'd like, so please go ahead.
Okay, well, there's four points I have tonight. One is, as you're talking...
I'm sorry, just, just for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your name and address for the record, so they'll have it when they do the minutes.
All right, Shirley. Sharon Samoska, 45 Pear, P-E-A-R Street in Waterbury. Do you need the phone number also?
Nope, that's fine, that's good right there, so go ahead, thank you.
When you were talking about water rates, I would really ask of you as a board to look into why we cannot have the special program where for overuse in the summer, where we're showing that we're using more water because we're watering gardens, washing cars, whatever it is that we're doing outside, that we get a break in that, especially for those of us in this area who do not have Waterbury water, but we have Connecticut Water Company servicing us, and we pay a lot more money for our water. It's fine, we deal with it, but let's be honest, we shouldn't have to pay for sewer water that we're not giving to the sewer. Next is, I was sorry I couldn't get on last week, but I am going to share with you my concerns and questions about FNG. And perhaps you can answer my questions, or maybe you already have looked at this, and we know that it's okay. But if not, it's a point to think about. Much has changed since the 2015-2018 data that was collected on this business expanding in Waterbury. What is the current data for size, capacity, worker protection, fire safety, odor control, procedures, policies, monitoring of substances that are hazardous that should be removed or that would preclude a load being accepted? Changes in traffic, upgrades to the railroad system? Are we certain that FNG can support the city's needs? What's the impact of the Greenway project? Are new permits required? How was the cost per ton and subsequent yearly increases derived? Are these costs going to be placed on residents? The tonnage is listed at 33,000 to 36,000. What's the estimate in the future? Would increased recycling, styrofoam, plastic bags, lower costs? How much putrescible garbage does FNG handle from other towns? What is the cost to them? Are charges equal for all? Have you toured the plant? Does the city receive percentage benefit for an exclusive contract with them? South Main Street is going to two lanes. What's the impact of increased truck traffic on school buses and emergency responders? Entering South Main Street from Platts Mill is a real challenge. Motorists ignore red lights, trucks park blocking vision, and they will, quite frankly, go much faster to get through a caution light. Consider disasters storing garbage for over 24 hours. Prevent flow of fluid from the garbage water into the river? Contingencies for prompt handling of garbage and power failures? Water in the city failure? For shortage of trucks and fuel and drivers? Does FNG have generators? If FNG cannot accept putrescible garbage or properly store it, is it the burden on the city to urgently find an alternate, or is it FNG's responsibility? Who's responsible for costs of upgrades, repairs, and expansion? FNG or the city? Incinerators in Connecticut are down to three. What if FNG can't find one locally? I would implore this board to refuse any attempt to put an incineration plant in this city. It's been discussed before. It should not be a viable solution. Question improving city garbage trucks, they leak? And the odor persists for days? In the South End, we have odor-on-odor, pollution-on-pollution. Board of Aldermen members, please protect our health and safety. Do your best. Who monitors FNG and the truckers? There is a set route, but that route is adjustable. What are the terms for that, and what are the routes? Trucks repeatedly get stuck and damage railroad overpasses. We know we have a couple of low overpasses on this side. Is the city responsible for road damage? We're an EJ community. Does this require reviews and meetings with residents as they expand? Has a review been done of the increase in pollution generated in the South End of town by these additional trucks and now the added effect of climate change, which we're already seeing?
One minute, Ms....
How is FNG addressing infrastructure? This is an expense, health, financial, and safety. Please look at that. Waterbury Hospital is my next concern. I would like to know why they were given a tax break when they are not servicing our community the way they should. They're not transparent. Honesty is in question. Prospect Medical in another state received a very large sum of money, and rather than put it into the institution, it gave much of it to its investors. Is that what we want? They have high admission rates. They have actually said to one hospital, "Oh, only change the bed linens every three days." In addition to that, they said, "Use paper towels as washcloths." They ran out of saline. Is this an acceptable practice for our patients? Having met with an official there, I was concerned for lack of honesty and transparency. How are they using funds? The undertone of the PBS program was, "They take what they can and run away from us." We can't afford Waterbury Hospital to fail.
That's time, Ms. Samoska. That's, that's five minutes.
I just want to say, I'm asking you, as a board, to create a committee or a task force to review this situation. Thank you, and hopefully our meetings will go better after tonight. Take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, caller, are you there?
Hello, could you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Martin.
Okay, Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. I'd just like to say, millions of taxpayers' monies have been spent throughout the year of renovations and improvements to the Sellers Bronx and Library, which it shows. But when I go downtown to the library and park my vehicle, I have to put money in the cat like everybody else, and I have no issues with that. But the issue I do have is, I would like to bring my ticket into the library and ask if they can validate it, so I won't have to pay to be at the library, because, you know, members of the Board of Aldermen, Mr. President, I go a lot of places, and not even here in Waterbury, but I'm just saying, out of town, it's a library, if you will, and they have free parking. And I don't understand why we don't have free parking for people who want to go to the library. I understand on Saturdays and Sundays, they don't give out a ticket. I know, I don't think the library is open on a Sunday, but I'm pretty sure on Saturday, they don't give out any tickets, and which I appreciate that. But I was just hoping that maybe in the future, you guys can look into that as members of the Board of Aldermen. Also, when friends of mine, who are also, by the way, veterans, who came home from the war many years ago, but still, just still living here in Waterbury, and they said to me down, you know, where I belong at the VFW here in Waterbury, they said, "You know, Martin, I don't understand. Here I am a veteran. I go down here to pay my taxes on my car, my motorcycle, my boat, whatever, SUV, whatever, and, you know, they won't even validate my ticket and my taxes on my house and, you know, whatever I got to pay." And I was just hoping you guys in the Board of Aldermen could look into that policy with the parking authority, and maybe that could change. And if you guys can look into that, I sure would appreciate that, not to repeat myself. But, you know, it's just sad to see that the city of Waterbury is such a great city. We've got a lot of great people here still, despite, you know, it seems like crime's on the rise again in Waterbury with unfortunate shootings and horrible things happening, and ATVs and dirt bikes and whatnot, and accidents around and people speeding. But the bottom line is, still a lot of good folks here in Waterbury, and I think you guys are, you know, you realize that and you know that. That's why you still live here. Also, I want to say, and what I like to do also is talk about the roads that are in dire need of repairs. I know the mayor's got an infrastructure policy, and we're going to be doing a lot of road paving and everything. But remember a while back, I gave you guys some information about the new technology they have, where they melt down the old tires and they cut them up and they utilize them for the road repair, and that lasts a long time. And nobody ever really got back to me on that, and I was hoping you guys, somebody on the Board of Aldermen could. Also, another thing I want to say is, there's a lot of litter and blight around Waterbury, and I've gone downtown, I walked around. You guys should walk around in the, where the alleys are and look. I don't know if it's businesses, they don't care, they have a nonchalant attitude. But I believe I spoke to some people on the Litter and Blight Commission about this. Again, you know, if you don't see it, if you see something, you should say it and be aware about it. But the bottom line is, when I walk around and I see this, and I say, when I go home, I say to Karen, geez, you know, it's amazing. I mean, you know, downtown looks nice, the green looks nice, everything, but if you walk around in the alleys or you walk by them, you know, you see that, because I was down, Bank Street down there with the Waterbury Neighborhood Council, Sunday, we were doing the planters down there, about six or seven of us, and the doctor spa and everything else, right where the island is over there on Bank Street. And I walked around the end, and I wanted to know why there was a bunch of people hanging around. And I guess there's a place where they rent a place in that big building. I don't know what's the name of that street there, but I looked around a corner, and I saw a lot of debris. I saw a lot of filth, and I just didn't understand.
One minute, Mr. Spring.
Okay, all right, I got to go. But one more thing is, the Waterville Community Club is hosting the Memorial Day event, May 31st at 1:00 PM, right by the old Waterville Firehouse, 1551 Thomason Avenue. And I thank you for your time, and don't take it personal, guys. I know you guys are doing the best you can, so I just want to let you know that, okay? All right, thank you, bye.
Is that it? One more? Okay.
Hello, is this, is this the right time to speak now?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Well, this is Bernadine or Bonnie Orentis from 246 Westmont Drive. And the litter commissioners have a few issues we want to leave with you and hope that you'll take them into consideration. First one, we are very curious as to what is taking so long with the garbage ordinance. People are out of control with the garbage, with the litter, but these garbage pails that stay out there, and they fill them as the week goes on. It's disgusting. So I don't know how we can get an answer to that, but I'm hoping that moves along. We really need that ordinance. The second thing is 311. That's been very helpful to a lot of people, but it's been taken away from us because it's only COVID now, and you cannot call 311. And we can do I Report Waterbury on the internet, but you have to give your name and address. And a lot of people are frightened to make a call when they have to identify themselves. And a lot of people still don't have a computer, the elderly in particular. And with the high grass, out of control, I can't even tell you how many we've reported already. And all the other things, people really need their 311 back. If there's a way you can do that for the people, it would be very much appreciated. And then the third thing is, the last time I called in, I did mention that we, because everything's out of control here, we need more blight workers. I hope in your budget, you're able to get some more permanent blight workers. We really, really need their city, because, you know, a good part of Waterbury is clean and neat and acceptable and beautiful. But a lot of it isn't because people are just coming through here. Now, today I got a call, eight tires in one section of town. They needed, somebody just drop them all off, just, you know, come out, maybe from out of town, and just drop them in good old Waterbury. And, you know, we're a proud city, and a good part of it is really lovely. But the parts that aren't are getting worse and worse, so we're hoping that you take all that into consideration when you budget. And the ordinance, I hope they can come soon, and if you can give the people their 311 back, I think they would be very, very thankful. And I thank you, and hope you enjoyed the evening and get a chance to be outside. It's so beautiful. Good night, and thank you so much.
Thank you. That is the last caller, so with that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes for the special meeting with the department head, held on Monday, May 10th, 2021, and the regular meeting, also held on Monday, May 10th, 2021. Alderman Brinelli, is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman...
I second.
Thank you, Alderman Martinez McCarthy. Are there any changes, additions, or changes to the, to the minutes? Hearing done, then, yes vote would be to approve the minutes as presented, and a no vote will be to disapprove the minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. I just want to note for the record that while we were in public speaking, Alderman Weaver, Alderman Lopez, and Alderman Nujain have joined the meeting, so they're all here as well. And I just want folks to know that, so thank you. Before we go into the Committee of the Whole, I just want to, I do want to note that, like I said, Alderman Nujain is here this evening, and I do want to offer congratulations to him and to his wife, Sarah. Apparently, they're expecting a baby boy in September, so congratulations and all the best of luck to you guys.
Thank you.
So, good luck. Also, item number eight on the agenda this evening is being withdrawn. That was a budget transfer in the amount of $300,000 that was going to fill a shortfall on the 909 Bank Street Park project that we're actually going to take up under item number five this evening. The reason that's being withdrawn is because it appears at this point that that project will be eligible for ARP funding, the money that's coming into the city. So they're going to program the ARP money that's available for that park into that park, and then that $300,000 will be available for a project that is not going to be potentially eligible for any other outside money. So we'll be able to stretch that money. So item number eight is going to be withdrawn at this point. Also, I just want to note that we're not taking up, we did have the public hearing this evening on the water rates, but those will be taking up when we take up the budget. We're not going to vote on those separately tonight, but we do have to have a separate public hearing for the water rate. So that's what we... public hearing for the water rate, so that's what we, the business that we did this evening. So with that, Alderman Brunelli, I would entertain a motion that we resolve ourselves into a committee of the whole.
So moved.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and we're sitting as a committee of the whole. So with that, the first item on the agenda, item number one, submission of the March 31st, 2021 financial statements to June 30, 2020 audit, and the February 23rd, 2021 Board of Directors minutes for the Palace Theater, is a receive and place on file. Item number two is the tax collector reporting as of 2020 to 2021 delinquent taxpayers, as of April 30, 2021, which is also a receive and place on file. Item number three is approval of a salary range adjustment for the positions of police chief and fire chief. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number three.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, seconding, a motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, then, yet, a yes vote will be to approve the salary range adjustment for the fire chief and the police chief, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motions carry unanimously, and the adjustments are approved. Item number five is the capital projects and non-capital special programs activity reports through the period ending May 4th, May 11, 2021, which is a receive and place on file. Item, on four, yep, okay. Item number four, thank you. Item number five is a construction contract for 909 Bank Street Park project and the not to exceed amount of $1,209,000 between the City of Waterbury and Mountain View Landscapes and Lawn Care Incorporated. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number five.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy. Motion having been made and seconded, I would first just start by recognizing our Director of WDC, Tommy Hyde, for purposes of just talking about this project a little bit, and then we'll go to any questions. Mr. Hyde?
Sorry, just getting off mute here. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you again for your time today, happy to be here and talk a little bit more about the 909 Bank Street project. So as you know, we're redeveloping a municipally-owned vacant lot on Bank Street and creating a pocket park. The RFP was advertised on March 15th, a pre-bid walkthrough was held on March 24th, and we had five potential bidders show up to that walkthrough. On April 5th, when the bids were reduced, were received, we only received two responses. We invited both Mountain View Landscape and Diversity Group, the two respondents, in on April 23rd, and we ended up going with Mountain View Landscaping's and plan on issuing notice to proceed on June 1st. The contract that...
I'm sorry, can I get in touch with you for one second? Can I ask everybody who's not speaking otherwise to just mute your computer, because we're getting a lot of background noise? So if you could just mute yourself while you're not speaking, that would be terrific. Thank you, go ahead, I'm sorry, Tom.
Oh, no problem, no problem. So the contract amount is not to exceed $1.2 million, the project timeline is 203 days, as Alderman Pernuski mentioned earlier, the original funding was $929,000 from CDBG. Originally, we were planning on bringing in about $300,000 from the outside source, although we do believe now that the ARP funding would be allowed to cover the remaining balance of this project. Some of the amenities include basketball court, restrooms, playground equipment, curved benches and tables, and various site improvements. And as you can see, kind of what the previous site looked like, its current condition as a vacant lot, and then ultimately what we hope to, or what the end product will look like is here to the right. So just in, being respectful of everyone's time, I went through that pretty quickly, happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions with respect to this project?
I do.
Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hello, Tommy, thank you for your time. A quick question on the additional funding from the ARP, that's the American Relief Program?
It's the American Rescue Program.
And that was from, where does that come from? That's from COVID, for COVID-19 relief fund from the state? How does that work?
So as part of the American Rescue Plan, basically every state and individual municipalities received a certain amount of funding. I believe Waterbury's share was somewhere in the $53 to $54 million, specifically for municipal government. I know the Board of Education also received a significant amount of money, but essentially, you know, that $53 or $54 million is split over a two-year period, we're expecting to get the first tranche of that within the next month or so. And then as part of that money, there's really strict, you know, defined criteria of what it can and can be spent on. CCM recently held an info session for all municipalities, and at that info session, we were informed that, you know, park projects are ineligible source.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, then, a yes vote would be to approve the construction project with the Mountain View Landscapes and Lawn Care in the amount of $1.209 million, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item number six is a contract in the amount of $20731.88 between the City of Waterbury and Utility Communications to purchase additional surveillance cameras to be installed in the downtown areas and Library Park. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number six.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy.
I second that motion.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is approved unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item number seven is a construction contract between the City of Waterbury and Savian Sons in the not to exceed amount of $93,500 for the Great Brook Culvert Rehabilitation Project, Phase One. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number seven.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
I second that motion.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Are there any questions? Hearing none, then, a yes vote will be to approve the contract, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item number eight, is the one I indicated earlier, was withdrawn. Item number nine is a budget transfer within the city's Capital Vehicle Replacement Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021, in the amount of $135,000. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number nine.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there, are there any questions? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then, a yes vote would be to approve, to approve the budget transfer, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously, the transfer is approved. Item number 10 is a service agreement with All-Star Transportation, 45-year period, in the not to exceed amount of $40,000, $40,747,600 for student bus transportation services, special education bus transportation services.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thanks for recognizing me.
Oh, Alderman Hunter, I'm sorry. I hear this voice come out.
Thanks for recognizing me, I'd like to recuse myself from item number 10 and item number 12.
Okay, the record will reflect that Alderman Hunter has recused himself from new business items 10 and 12. With that, with respect to item number 10, Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 10.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions?
Quick question.
Alderman Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. President. It just says, subject to approval at the Board of Ed meeting that happened on the 20th, I'm assuming it was approved, is that true?
That's true.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, then, a yes vote will be to approve the contract, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item number 11 is the ratification of the submission of the Connecticut State Department of Education Bureau of Health Nutrition, Family Services, and Adult Education Supplemental Grant Application for Adult Education Cooperative Eligible Entity Literacy Volunteers of Greater Waterbury. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 11.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
I second.
Okay, I just want to give you some further background beyond, I think, what was in the initial cover memo that you got. So this is a grant application in the amount of $54,313 by Literacy Volunteers of Greater Waterbury, which is a cooperative entity, and would be the grantee, it's to provide tutoring services for students who otherwise score below a certain eligibility benchmark on the Adult Education Placement Test, which impacts their ability to enroll in the Adult Education Program. The grant services that they'll receive complement the tutoring and programming offered internally through the Waterbury Adult Education Program, and it's for one year. This year, the state released this application late in the process and required a completed application in less than two weeks after it was released. As the beneficiary of the services and the local education agency, the application required the signature of the superintendent. Accordingly, the request that we have tonight is for ratification of the signed grant application that has been submitted to the state. So with that, are there any questions or any discussion with respect to this? So the application has been put in, it was done by the superintendent because of a tight timeframe, and they're asking us now to retroactively approve the steps that were, that were taken, so. Okay, hearing nothing, then, a yes vote would be to approve the ratification, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the motion is approved. Item number 12 is a service agreement with Durham School Services for a five-year period in the not to exceed amount of $46,605,835.99 for student bus transportation services, regular education bus transportation services. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 12.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Are there any questions? No. Hearing none, all those, a yes vote will be to approve the contract and service agreement, a no vote will be to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the service agreement is approved. Item number 13 is a Connecticut Purchase of Service Contract Agreement at No Cost for the Support for Pregnant and Parenting Teens, Women, Fathers, and Their Families Program. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 13.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a second?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, then, a yes vote will be to approve the purchase of service contract agreement, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item number 14 is a contract with Richards Corporation in a not to exceed amount of $205,500 for concrete stair replacement at the Wilson School. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 14.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any, are there any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item 15 is a contract in the amount of $325,850 for the freight elevator rehabilitation at the sludge processing building at the water pollution control facility between the City of Waterbury and the Hartford Elevator Company. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 15.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions? Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, then, a yes vote will be to approve the contract, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item 16 is a no-cost memorandum of understanding between the City of Waterbury and the Brassville Center and Commons for an outreach site location. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 16.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions? Any discussion? No. Hearing none, then, a yes vote will be to approve the memorandum of understanding, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the memorandum is approved, the motion carries unanimously, and the memorandum is approved. With respect to standing committees, the request is to approve refunds for tax overpayments in the amount of $13,068.87. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion having made, Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, then, a yes vote will be to approve the refunds, a no vote will be to disapprove them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the refunds are approved. So with respect to old business items, number four and five, which are the budget, the four is the operating budget, and five is the capital budget for the upcoming fiscal year, and then the improvement plan for the fiscal years 2022 to 2026. The charter requires that we have two public hearings, as you all know, the first at the beginning of the process, the second at the end of the process. We need to adopt the budget early in June, and so right now, the plan would be to take the budget up at our regular meeting on June 7th, which is our next regular meeting, but we have to have the public hearing within a very narrow timeframe, I think it's seven days, and no less than three and no more than seven days prior to the adoption of the budget, and so I would propose that we schedule this evening the second budget public hearing for Tuesday, June 1st, at 6:30 PM, and most likely will be a Zoom meeting. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion? Alderman Brunelli?
Yeah, so moved.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, does anyone have any questions? Or is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, then, the motion on the table would be to set the public hearing, the second charter required public hearing for Tuesday, June 1st, at 6:30 PM. Again, most likely it will be a Zoom meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the public hearing is set. With that, I would entertain a motion, Alderman Brunelli, that we return to the regular order of business. Motion having been made by Alderman Lopez, apparently, Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then, a yes vote will return us, a no vote will not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and we're back to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item one and item two are on consent to receive and place on file. Item three is on consent to adjust the salary range for the police chief and the fire chief. Item four is a receive and place on file. Item five is a contract for the Bank Street Park Project. Item six is the contract to purchase additional surveillance cameras in the downtown areas and Library Park. Item seven is a construction contract for the Great Brook Culvert Rehabilitation Project. Item eight was withdrawn. Item nine is the budget transfer regarding city capital vehicle replacement. Item number 10 is the service agreement with All-Star Transportation Company for special education bus transportation services. The record will reflect that Alderman Hunter will recuse himself from the item number 10. Item number 11, well, you know what? Let's do it this way. We won't put 10 on the consent calendar because otherwise Alderman Hunter can't vote on anything. So, well, 10 and 12, right. So item 10 will not be on the consent calendar. Item 11 is on consent for the grant application. Item 12, we will not put on consent. Item 13 is on consent for the purchase of service contract. Item 14 is on consent for the concrete stair replacement contract. Item 15 is on consent for the freight elevator rehabilitation at the sludge processing building. Item 16 is on consent for the no-cost memorandum of understanding regarding the outreach site location. Item, standing committees are on consent to refund tax overpayments. And old business, item number four, and we'll do it as item number five together, consent to set the second charter required public hearing for Tuesday, June 1st at 6:30 p.m. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, then, a yes vote will be to approve the consent calendar as presented, and a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, the consent calendar is approved. Items number 10 and 12 will take up together. The record will reflect that Alderman Hunter will recuse himself from those items. Item 10 is the service agreement with All-Star Transportation for bus transportation services, special education bus transportation service. And item number 12 is the service agreement with Durham School Services for student bus transportation, regular education bus transportation services. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion with respect to items 10 and 12?
Motion to approve both items.
Thank you, Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously and items 10 and 12 are approved. With that, is there anything for the good of the order? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Martinez McCarthy seconding. Thank you, Alderman Lopez seconding as well. So thank you all. We'll see you a week from tomorrow at 6:30 for the public hearing. Have a great week and stay, stay well. Thank you all. Oh.
Happy Memorial Day.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, we're now adjourned. Have a great week, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Blacks and Latinos have limited access to prevention, treatment and recovery services for substance use disorders. And while they have similar rates of opioid misuse as the general population, in recent years, blacks have experienced the greatest increase in rates of overdose death from opioids, according to a 2020 study. To learn more about how to reduce your risk, come see me. I'm Samuel Bowens, and I'm a part of the Waterbury Health Department Prevention Unit. We are Judgment Free Zone, and we are here to help.